No big deal.
One minute.
Not because we have.
So we do the prayer first. Prayer for.
It's all right.
All right. Good afternoon, everybody. We're going to have Counselor Pivoy give us a word of prayer and then we will call the meeting to order. Thank you.
Dear Father, Heavenly, we are humbled to serve in the capacity of a public servant, and we are grateful to thank for the opportunity to do so. We are grateful to live in such a wonderful community, in such a wonderful part of the world, and our hearts and prayers are today in Belgium. Please bless those that have been affected, and we know that as many. We ask also for thy guidance as we make decisions to benefit the citizens of this town. Help us be wise, help us be transparent, and do thy will. We ask and say these things in the name of thy Son, Jesus Christ.
Amen. Thank you, Counselor Pivoy, and thank you for that thought. It was tough for me to look at it this morning. I used it there for considerably for five years a lot, and that's how we are out. So we will call the meeting to order. It's 22nd of March, 25 o'clock. So we will look at the agenda, and there are some additions to the agenda. First of all, we want to recognize the media. We want to recognize Corey Mathencarthy for Channel 32, and Kim Pivoy for Temple Star, and our delegation, Bob Durda. Thank you. So we will have to add under 7F, AUMA and grant in lieu of taxes.
What number was that?
7F.
Okay.
Under 12, we will have a confidential item, AHS Services, and it's under the FOIP Section 21, 1B, called intergovernmental relations.
Mayor, if I can have an addition under your requests, committee reports?
Okay.
I have a request under committee reports. Or, yeah.
It's under 9A?
Yes.
So it'll be part of a discussion that you want to bring up at that point?
Please. 9A dash one.
Well, I think we just bring up a question when we discuss the committee reports.
Yeah, so you will have a question? Thanks.
I also have a question to slip in right then.
Yeah. Well, if you have a comment, you slip in.
Okay, all right.
That's just purely just a discussion.
Let's get some order. We'll discuss the committee report at this point, and so regarding which committee is that?
FCS.
FCS?
Yes.
That Council Benri, Council Pivoy?
Abba is Waste Authority.
Waste Authority, and?
Fireball.
Fireball, okay. Okay, very good. And Counselor?
I'm sure it was that.
Okay. All right. There is something else that I need to add under 7G. It will have to do with power terms of reference. We just had our meeting, and we need to maybe tweak something. Okay, so I need a motion to adopt the agenda. Counselor Benri?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor? Thank you. All right, so we have our delegation. Bob, if you'd like to come here. Bob is going to talk. He's from Alberta Southwest Regional Alliance, and he's going to discuss broadband options. Thank you. Go ahead.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Bob Durda. I'm with Alberta Southwest Regional Economic Alliance, and I've been studying the topic of broadband or digital connectivity for our region for about two years now, and I'm happy to say that we're making some progress in a number of ways. And one I would like to point out is that the conversation is maturing a bit more, and we're refining the information we're sharing, and I think you'll find that helpful. So this is a relatively new presentation that I have of information I've gathered the last couple of years, but more so the last six months, really trying to help communities find a process to evaluate digital connectivity and its importance, and then some of the options. So today I'm going to really talk specifically about the different business models that I've seen that are in Canada, and they have some US examples as well, and how they may or may not fit for you. And I think it's going to generate more questions perhaps than answers, as always, but it should generate good discussion for you and considerations. So I'll start off with my first slide, and I think it's important to put into context where the business model fits on a feasibility process. So we've come up with this feasibility process over time of steps a community may want to take to evaluate this. And so if you look in the far left, just documenting your community needs, figuring out our businesses that needed, you really figure out the why for your community, and that's a big one. And each community is generally a little bit different. So that why can be a lot of different things. If you want to attract more youth and young families to the community, that could be your main why. That may be what you build your proposal around or your idea around. Number two, when you identify existing assets, so I call it just taking a bit of inventory of your community, that can be leadership, that can be the fact that you own your own utility. That's a big advantage in this context, and I'll talk about that a little bit more as we go along. But those are just things, so that's where I say you're just taking inventory of your community and what you'd like it to be, or what you have already existed. Then you want to identify your public policy tools, and this is one that often gets overlooked, and we're trying to encourage all of our communities to put some consideration into this, whether they're going to pursue digital connectivity now or in the future. And when I say pursue digital connectivity, it may not be you building it or owning it, but even with a third party, with one of the incumbents, these policy tools are important to have in place no matter what. So that's why we find that it tends to get communicated and understood that these public policy tools are only important if you're doing it yourself, but really, what I'm referring to in the simplest of terms is something called five-party trenching, where in your planning of your community and your building out of your community, Olds has put in something called five-party trenching, which means that telecommunications companies can only go into the trench once, and they all go in at the same time, and that's whether it be power, water, et cetera, so that you avoid having this infrastructure dug up two weeks later, two months later, et cetera. And so that's something that we actually think AUMA could probably be pushing for all of our communities, is bylaws such as five-party trenching, because we think it should just be a standard.
Well, can I just ask you? We kind of looked at that aspect of the trenching, but we also understand that when you lay fiber, a section of it, and if you want to then fuse it to another section of it, it's extremely expensive. And Jeff can maybe talk to that.
I'd have to go back on Tyler's notes. He had some conversations with, I think it was AXIA, just talking about if we did intermittent installation?
Yeah.
You know, and then trying to connect that all together eventually?
Yeah.
But that could be quite costly.
Yeah, so, yeah, so yes, now I understand the context. So what I would recommend is that, say you have a new subdivision, I'll say, I'll use a Greenfield subdivision as the example. Well, I think it would be wise, then, as part of the engineering of that, and when you're drawing out the streets and where the water's going, to do the same for the fiber. And most engineering companies nowadays would know exactly what you need in terms of setting it up, and you would just put the conduit in, not even the fiber itself, so just the conduit, but have a plan so that it would connect back to the main, the next main rotor connection at that time. But it's similar to, yeah, if you were building out your water system, you would have an engineer design that for you. So you'd want to incorporate that at that time, because yes, doing, you may end up with bridges to nowhere, as we say. So it does take an overall time, just like any of your other infrastructure. I treat it very similar. So number four, you say, as you can see in the middle, it is defining business models. Then there's developing a technical design of whichever model you choose. Now, those two can be interchangeable, and then you develop the financial funding plan, and then develop an action plan and timeline. So I just like this as a general process that communities could follow, no matter which methodology you take when pursuing digital connectivity. So then I have this paradigm, or this continuum that I like to use. On the far left, the bottom left, you'll see that this is where you're a partner, but you don't have any of the assets, you don't own any of the assets. And as you can see, I put that you'll have less community benefit, less investment on your part, but also less risk and less return. So this is just kind of a summary of this one. And, you know, I even put up their low political risk, because I've already seen in some of our communities that have started discussing doing it on their own, and some of the dollar figures that have come out, and it became a real political football, where that's all residents heard. They didn't hear all the benefits, they didn't hear the whole story, they just heard the number that it was expensive. And so I think you have to throw that in there and just understand that that's, you know, this is a big project. And a lot of communities don't do large projects like this very frequently, so sometimes it's generational. And right now, we haven't done anything large in most of our communities of this size. You know, even a swimming pool in Pincher Creek, I can think back, you know, like it was three to four million dollars. That was large, but that was a number of years ago already. So our residents already forget that this is what things sometimes cost when you're building something that is going to be generational for multi-generations. So here, you're a community as a partner, but you don't own the asset, so I would use this as the AXIA example, is one of the first ones that come to mind. They're willing to come into your communities, build it all, not leave you a bill for anything, and just flip the switch for you at no cost, and all you have to maybe do is help rally some of the support for it. Telus is also doing it, so they've done Cranbrook, Kimberley, Fernie, Chaber, Edmonton, Vancouver, and I believe Kohlhurst now as well. And so the difference being, AXIA is promoting an open network, Telus is offering a proprietary network, saying only they will offer services. Pros and cons to each. So as you can see, even in each model, there's some nuances that you want to pay attention to and be aware of. The open network of AXIA, to date, no other company has offered their services over AXIA. And that's been quite intentional by the other companies. They don't want to give AXIA any revenue at all, and so they're kind of boycotting them essentially. And I expect that will shift, because in the US, that did shift. That's how it originally started to build out, and companies boycott each other's networks. But once AXIA has 10 or 20 communities connected, I have a feeling Telus and Shaw will have no choice but to take note, because Telus and Shaw's options will be to go into those communities and put fiber in also, or just operate over AXIA's. And, you know, they'll start looking at dollars and cents and say, okay, it's time. So in model number two, I consider this one more for the very rural areas, and so I won't spend a lot of time on it, but this is where the community might own the asset, but they lease the highway back to an operator, and it could work here because of you owning your utilities. The examples I'm going to give you are actually the Carson County example. And this is where they lease it to the service provider. There's some political risk, because they're going to expend some money and put the asset into the ground or hang it on the poles, and it requires some investment, so of course that always comes with a bit of risk. So it's what Carson County and CCI, the current largest wireless provider, are exploring. In the US, there's many more examples of this. And one in particular in Indiana that I really liked was a county that built out and started with just 50 miles of carrier-grade network that they didn't have anything to do with except putting it in the ground, and then brought on, they found vendors who wanted to lease space from them. And what I didn't realize, and we have since learned and confirmed in Waterton, is the nice part about when you lease it to a carrier such as Telus or Shaw, they actually pay in advance. So in this case, they had 10-year prepaid leases upfront that helped pay for the construction. And so Waterton has experienced this from their build-out, because as soon as they got connected, Telus Mobility approached them and said, "We'd like to put a tower now in Waterton. Can we use your fiber?" And in their case, they offered them a five-year upfront payment. So that's where the asset, all of a sudden, you can get some cash flow. So in this example in Indiana, they were cash flow positive since the inception, and really all they ever did was dig up the ground, put the conduit in, and as the terminology is, blow the fiber through, but they never connected it, didn't need to have any technical expertise that way, they don't need the engineering expertise, and they all of a sudden had a revenue stream. Now they've built out 150 miles in this county, because they just realized it became a revenue stream for them, so. So in this model, this is where a community would actually have the fiber installed, they would light it, and it would be used for certain community infrastructure. And then you put it in excess, and you lease that to service providers. And when I mention excess, I'll use the City of Calgary as an example. In this case, I also have Qnet and Coquitlam. The City of Calgary is doing this, where instead of looking at broadband as a product, they're just calling it digital connectivity. In the City of Calgary, they're putting in 144 strands of fiber just to operate all their city services. They're putting in another 144 strands of fiber that will, they will lease to the incumbent providers. Basically, that 144 could be for private companies that want to have their own fiber, it could be Telus, who wants to offer residential or business services, but the City of Calgary actually can utilize 144 strands themselves to run and connect their 280 offices, all their buses that they track, all their utilities. They just have much more infrastructure to manage than our smaller communities do. But this is just an example of how, while they're putting it in, it's virtually no cost, it's $4.50 for them to run the other bundle beside it, and they get to lease that out. So they've chosen not to have any incumbents come in and build out Calgary, they're doing it themselves. And again, financially, it really makes sense. In Coquitlam's example, they had put in fiber just to run their streetlights simply, way back in 2000, and what they realized shortly after that is they had excess capacity that they could lease out, and so they've done the same thing. They just had their infrastructure running on their little fibers. I think they went about 24 for the city, and then the other bundle, they lease out to Rogers, to Telus, and so forth. And so that works out well. Again, I would point this to being probably more of an urban example, because we don't have a lot of streetlights or infrastructure that I know of in our small communities that requires fiber. So in this model, number four, as we move up to the continuum, this is where you had owned the asset, so you liked the fiber, but you actually pay someone else to offer their services over it. So this is the new model that emerged in Waterton. So they own the fiber asset, but they actually pay the people in Olds from ONET a flat rate for the month to offer services, and then it's up to Waterton to resell those services and recoup that money, which they've been successful at, because it's a small community, they've been able to knock on doors and so forth. So this is kind of a different one. So they're not, they're not the overall operators of the network. They have an understanding of it, they have Chris Jensen, who's obviously technologically inclined and very good at things, but he doesn't have the tools. ONET monitors the system from Olds for them on their behalf. So here, there's, you become, you have a much broader community benefit in this type of scenario generally. And by that I mean, they're just more flexible, they're more vested in the community, as the Waterton, they call it Waterton Community Broadband Network, and so they can make up special packages for companies quite easily. And then in the next example that I show you, which was the Olds example, Olds has recently just gone in and put free Wi-Fi throughout the hospital in Olds, and they just did that as a community service for any patients who are staying there, and they want to be able to stream TV and so forth, and they don't have to rent TVs anymore, they just offer free Wi-Fi. And that tends to be something you won't get from the incumbent providers. So you get those softer things, and then in Olds, they're also doing, they're engaging their, the seniors, so the youth of the community go in and sit and help the seniors in the community and become more engaged with connectivity. And those are just the little softer things, the intangibles that we, you get, if you own it and or say operate it, you can just have more flexibility. Now, in defense of AXIA, in Nantucket, they've recently done something that was very nice. They had an open house once they had their network built out, and in the community center in Nantucket, they didn't have Wi-Fi connectivity, and AXIA came in for that event, put it in, allowed people to see it, and try out the internet, the fast fiber, and have them actually sign up for their contract. So this is after it's all been built already. And then they left all that equipment behind, and they left the community hall fully wired, about $10,000 worth of equipment. And that was a good gesture. So AXIA is learning from people like Olds and Waterton, you know, in those softer things, and trying to narrow that gap of what the community benefit is. So that's good, and that's what competition does, you know, it makes us all a little bit better generally. So I just want to point to that as a, you know, there's change happening in the landscape. So this is model five. This is where you own everything. So you have the opportunity to, you own the asset, and you also operate it as an internet service provider, they call it. Obviously, there's more risk, there's higher investment, but there can be greater return, can be revenue opportunities. And in my opinion, so something that I always look at is, do you necessarily want to be the ISP? Hmm, maybe not. What Waterton's done is pretty clean and simple. It's a big step back of responsibility in operating, but you still own the asset. So this one to me is the, you know, the crown jewel, this is Olds, but I'm not sure every community would go that route in this day and age, when you can offer their services in your town by just paying them a fee, instead of building out the $4 million infrastructure they needed to become an ISP. So that's one distinction I make nowadays, that now that they're offering their services to other communities, going to model five is definitely not as attractive as it once was, so. So going back, you know, it's basically, I'll do the summary page too, because I think this is good. Again, just going over, you know, your community inventory, how's your leadership? Do you have an existing utility? In your case, you do, which you own and control. Do you have major civil works that could be coming up? Because that could be leveraged, and that's how Waterton did. And Waterton also used, I should mention, and you've probably heard Barney say this, they use their MSI funding a lot, to, of their part of the grant, about the 275,000 that they've had to put in, they use their MSI funding for that. But again, we always have to understand, why can they do that? What's the distinction? Well, Parks Canada pays for a lot of the infrastructure at Waterton.
That will.
Yes, exactly. So, and those are all the subtle things that when you hear these examples, there's usually a good reason why that community was able to do that. And so I always, my role here is to try to show you all of that, not provide a bias per se, but I also want you to realize that with your utility, that is one of the biggest advantages for bringing digital connectivity, and that's been shown over and over in the US, where the communities that have built out the fastest have generally had their own utility, and most cost-effectively, and just built it into that plan, and it was able to be staged over years, because you have control over all of that. So I say don't overlook that as a big opportunity. So why, and then the why, why is connectivity important to your community? Well, that's for each community to discuss and figure out. I think that's very important to figure out from the outset.
Question? Comment? I sure appreciate your presentation, because it allows you to understand each level with new eyes, new pair of eyes, from leadership right up to political risk and investment level, and whatever can the committee benefit from. And so I appreciate that the returns on investment, so very well done. Thank you.
And I encourage you to think of not just the economic benefits, but the overall social and community benefits.
Right.
We haven't been able to measure the social and community benefits yet, or as well, or attach a dollar figure to them, but it's something that, as, as our original group, Alberta Southwest, we are hoping to do, we're hoping to get some funding to actually study some of that, because we actually think that part of the equation may be larger than the economic side of it as well. So it's just something we haven't been able to put numbers onto, and because we haven't had the studies done, but it's on our radar to do that.
Counselor, please.
I'm trying to understand what you were saying about AXIA. They, they put in the fiber, and of course, one of their stipulations, we needed to, you know, get a certain percentage of interest in the community.
Yeah.
But you were saying that they, they don't, they're not the service provider, they, they contract with Shaw or Telus or something else? So I didn't quite understand.
Okay. So they will offer services themselves, or internet, to each of you, so, to all the businesses and homes. So they are a service provider.
Oh.
But it is internet only. So say, for example, if you have a Telus cable package, you would have to keep your Telus cable package, or cut the cord, and subscribe to other services over AXIA, that would be Show Me or You Crave TV, so you can get TV over the internet. But generally speaking, AXIA is a service provider.
Just for, just for internet?
Just for internet.
Just for internet.
But they allow their fiber to be used by Telus and Shaw, so if Telus wants to offer you a bundle over their internet, they will allow that, and so you could still be a Telus customer and operate it over.
And they could, and they could use the AXIA fiber?
Yeah. Which is kind of ideal, because then your town's not going to get rebuilt three times by Telus and Shaw with fiber, it'll all go the same. But to date, Telus and Shaw haven't offered their services over.
For AXIA, okay.
And that's, those are competitive.
Okay. I want to understand.
Jostling, let's go in there and say.
Any other questions? Counselor Pivoy?
Yeah, I think you've studied a little bit the upcoming contract renewal of the Supernet. Can you explain that and how that might affect towns that have it? Because I know we have access to Supernet, and I think that goes to our schools, our library.
Kind of office. We're not hooked up.
Wait, not to you.
It's there.
We have, we're not using.
And I think it's cost prohibitive for anybody else to get on there.
It seems to be, at least, 60% of communities, you know, these municipal offices are connected to the Supernet currently, so only 60%. It was a $300 to $400 million taxpayer investment essentially to build the Supernet. It is a fabulous piece of infrastructure that is just underutilized. The contract for operating AXIA Supernet, or their Supernet division manages that, that's different than the group that will come talk to you about putting fiber into your community, so that's an important distinction to make. That contract is under review now, it's coming, it's due in 2018, to be, to have a new provider or an incumbent provider chosen. There are so many legal entanglements with that, that we could spend all afternoon talking about it. So all I wanted to say is that it could go very, very bad in how, like, right now it's underutilized, it could actually get worse, depending on how that contract gets sorted out. So there's, there's risk there. Or there's hope that it could get better, but it doesn't look great. There's just a number of legal issues entangled with the Supernet contract that is just unfortunate, but it's just things that went wrong when it was initially signed 10 years ago. Yeah.
Jeff, do you have a question?
On that, Bob, because I've, I've heard this, although I haven't heard anything to substantiate. Have you heard that there is risk, that if AXIA does not get the Supernet contract, that the communities they put infrastructure in will be complicated by them not getting that contract? Because that's what their competitors would be saying.
Yeah.
That you have a lot of risk of going with AXIA, because if they don't get this contract, it's going to compromise their position to service these communities.
Yeah. I, I sent that question in to Service Alberta, and their response was, Bob, that's a very difficult question, and, I mean, we don't have an answer for you now, we're looking at you, it's piled into the complications. So I see that as a risk. But on the other hand, so then I say, you know, the bottom question I think is key, the key panel participants in Austin, they were asked, what keeps you awake at night? Could that be one that keeps you awake? I look at it this way, I think, okay, if they come in and build out your community, and somehow they aren't able to connect as affordably, et cetera, to the Supernet to use as their backhaul, the bottom line is the infrastructure's there, and do you end up putting lean on it, do you end up taking it over? Like, what is the worst-case scenario? Yeah, it could get kind of utterly legalized. But on the other hand, I still, if you put no dollars into it, what's the worst-case scenario? You're where you are today, and yes, it may be a step back. So I, I'm trying not to minimize that too much, but I try not to lose too much sleep over it either, because I think, well, we've asked the questions ourselves, we haven't got the straight answers, we hope for it, make it really clear. Because I had an answer this other, are our communities complicating things for you with the Supernet when they are going and connecting with AXIA? They said, oh, again, good question, but can't really tell you a straight answer, so, you know, it's, we've tried to ask all the hard questions we possibly can, so I'm glad that you recognize it and you've heard it from competitors, but really, you know, if they come in and build it for you and it didn't cost you anything, it's, you know, maybe not such a good, in my opinion, but.
Okay. Just to follow up to that, which, well, it's related to that, it's the Supernet. So what you're saying is essentially, if, if our hopes are to provide reliable fiber in our community, we maybe shouldn't put all our eggs in the Supernet hope basket, and just hope that Supernet solves all our problems for us.
They're distinct, though.
Yeah, but Supernet and AXIA Fiber is not exactly the same story.
Nope, they're, they're a different company.
They're two different entities.
And you also have the benefit of Shaw as fiber coming down Highway 2 as well. I can't remember who else, I believe there's even.
Telus has some stuff just at 5 out here.
So, you know, Waterton had no options. They had to go with this. Telus was their only option. So at least you have some options in the worst-case scenario. I mean, I didn't consider doing a Freedom of Information request to see how AXIA FiberNet is paying AXIA Supernet, to just see what that looks like, to make sure it's not a zero not a zero-dollar amount, because then I think, ooh, there's a bad business model with the SuperNet comes under someone else's control. But, you know, I haven't got to that point yet, I'm trying to figure out what's our, how far do we go in investigating? And, you know, so I like the questions, the fact you're thinking of all that, it's important to ask those questions and get them out, and to help you way out what may or may not be better. Now, the other thing I should mention, I'm not sure if you heard, but AXIA has been sold recently. So the entire AXIA conglomerate of Calgary has been purchased by a Swiss investment firm called Partners Group. To date, they've come out and just said, no changes, everything's going to be the same, but who knows what it really means. And it was interesting, that was one of my questions two months ago, when I wrote to Service Alberta, I said, could AXIA just be going out to all these communities, gain all this excitement, because they want to build it up and sell it? And everyone kind of laughed and said, oh yeah, what are they going to sell, really? It's really, they haven't built out many communities. But that's actually exactly what they did. Jason from AXIA said, he said, we gathered enough interest, this investment firm saw the potential, and that's what they did. So then the risk becomes, well, what if the investment firm finds out that AXIA per se doesn't own the SuperNet? Maybe they told them they did. Like, my questions, you know, my cynical side, it asked the day after we heard they were bought out, was, did they sell the SuperNet with it? You know, which isn't even theirs to sell per se, but they kind of believe it is. You know, how complicated does it get? And I just ask, I just throw these questions out, to just say, you know. But on the other hand, everything they've done seems to be, you know, Vulcan's done, Noblefur's done, Nanton's done. All you can do is ask the questions, satisfy your own needs as to whether you got the answers you want, and just explore it as another option, one of five options. Did you say Shaw's coming as well?
Yeah, they're coming in then two weeks.
Counselor Edmonds, you have a question?
Is the 30% buy-in a pretty good figure? I know it is for them, but for us, where we have an aging population as compared to other areas, that's going to be a problem.
Yeah, I mean, and so, I mean, it's, I would call that kind of the industry standard, from what I've seen of all the models in the U.S. and so forth, to make it work, to make it financially viable, 30% is, you know, pretty normal. So that part, I mean, we also have to understand, it's just an intention, 30%.
It's not that.
And so they're, they're taking a lot of risk there.
Yeah.
And, you know, my, I just, I commend them on that, because they're, that's just getting people's intended, you know, there's no contractual commitment there. So, you know, is that impossible, or is that hard to come? No, I really don't know. Like, you'll know your community better.
Like in Oles, where they were providing everything on their fiber, once they put it in, they had trouble getting to 30%, even though they were paying everything.
Yep.
And it's taken them quite a while to get up to 30%. So I'm just wondering, it's going to be hard here to convince people that it's a bigger benefit to them.
Yep. And so what I encourage you though, is some communities, when they, you know, if you pursue the sign-up group, I would take an active approach, you know, whether the council does that. So some of our communities have identified, saying, well, we don't want to be seen favoring the other communities. So that's, you know, that's up to you to decide. But on the other hand, in Nanton, for example, they turned it over to the chamber to help promote, and, you know, to be at arm's length in the council. So that's another, I would have a plan or a strategy, no matter what you do of any of these models, I would go through the seven-step feasibility process, and then when you, you know, if you decide on a model, then say, okay, what's our plan to make sure this works? Because we might as well make it work, whatever you're choosing, you might as well give it your best, I think.
And I really think we need to think of future generations.
Yes.
I mean, if we don't start to think about the renewal of our towns, we're not really thinking forward.
And I've had that conversation with residents of Pincher Creek, I live in the MD of Pincher Creek, but when they were doing the AXIA sign-up, I said, you'll have to look past just your own immediate needs.
Yeah.
This year and next year, think of your children and grandchildren, because this is the kind of legacy infrastructure you're looking at putting in.
Yeah.
So, and to me, the bottom line is digital connectivity, and I haven't included it in this presentation, but it is increasing exponentially, and there's just no, we're not getting away from it, and our current legacy technologies of copper and coax just aren't going to keep up. And we have empirical ways to expand that, so.
Bob, I understand, AXIA had a plan to build up five communities in 2016, is that right, or?
Yeah, so I would, the numbers moved around, but at the Digital Future Symposium, which I was at two weeks ago in Madison Hat, I spoke to Jason, and he said that by the next Digital Future Symposium, which is in the fall, he said, we could have five more communities connected by then. So, but what their plan for the 2016, at one point I'd heard that they would do 10 communities. So I'm not sure, you know, that's one thing, and so that's the challenge you'll have to accept, is, and we found this in other communities, and you may have found it already, is AXIA hasn't shared a lot of information, even if you do the sign-ups, they don't generally tell you where you're at. And I think, as frustrating it is, as challenging it is, that's their business decision, and that's part of what you're buying into, if you choose that model. It's lower risk, you have lower control, you're also going to get less information.
Right.
So it's one of those things where you can't expect to have it all, where they're going to share all the details and all the, when they're footing all the bill and so forth. That's just like, and we've, we've gone through that with our communities enough now that we realize, okay, this is how they operate, and they generally, as our, as the CEO, Kevin Miller, told us, they just showed up one day with the trucks. You know, we'd given them all the permit approvals and so forth, and then all of a sudden, the trucks rolled in town, and they, and it was starting. And that was their way of announcing it, because they didn't want to tip off their competitors of what they're doing, because that brings competitive packaging, pricing, that's what Oles went up against, that's why their challenges of getting better penetration was just because then Telus and Shaw really got aggressive, giving away TVs and so forth to keep their customers. So AXIA has their reasons for doing it.
And just to follow up question to that, so depending on, they might do five, they might do 10, they might, you know, hopefully, right now, to your knowledge, though, there are a number of communities that have already reached that 30% interest level and now are waiting to hear back from AXIA. And how many, how many are we behind? If Cardston gets on the ball and gets 30%, we're behind all of them.
Five years from now, maybe.
Well, that's, yeah, that's what I'm asking.
You know, I have no idea how that selection process goes. Even some communities have thought they're 30%, and then I've heard other, you know, the other side saying, no, no, they're not even close yet.
Yeah.
So there's not many facts out there that I can point to, but I do, I think your comment is driven in that, at our board meeting in November, AXIA had stated they'd like to build out all 400 rural communities. But at that pace of five or 10 a year, well, it's 40 years, we need to find other solutions. And that's where, no matter what policies are, no matter what happens with the SuperNet, whether, no matter what happens with CRTC and their decisions, all those organizations have encouraged us, don't stop pursuing this one way or the other, waiting for policy to direct you, because it's, those are all years away as well, policy changes. SuperNet's 2018, CRTC, basic services, it'd be five years away before they make a basic service, if that's what they do. And so they say, keep finding solutions that work for you now, and don't be trying to guess what's going to happen in the future.
I think one of the advantages we have, which might put us ahead of other communities, is that we own our utility poles.
We own our poles.
Which is a big bonus.
Yeah, I'm sure that's why, that's why you have Shaw coming as well, and, you know, they recognize, even AXIA would recognize that as a big advantage for their costs of installing.
Cheaper.
So it's the same reason that you, you know, so whatever scenario you pick, you have an advantage, and should attract.
Okay, thank you very much. It's been a great presentation. Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. All right. We're going to go to five, adoption of minutes of March 8, 2016. The minutes have at least one glitch that we could talk about. Counselor Creed, maybe you want to talk about it before we move on that item?
Sure, okay. Yeah, the mayor noticed when motion 1679 didn't read right, I noticed that as well. We'd given Counselor Barfus a really nice motion to read. Apparently in the minutes, there was one line left out. Jim found that line. So if you look at motion 1679, there is a line missing there.
In the middle paragraph.
In the middle paragraph, talking about whereas, this grant is determined to have a low probability of success, and, and then there's a line that said, determined to have a higher probability of success, there's a line missing between that.
Which one is it?
That says the other, the other project was the one that was determined to have a higher probability of success.
Can you?
So that line will be added.
Can you give us a line that you will be adding, Shen? Do you have it?
Whereas the council has also approved a grant for the Rotary Playground at Lions Park, which was determined to have a higher probability of success.
Okay, that's great, thanks. So that will be a change that will be made. And the other question I had is on motion 1680. At the end, it speaks of the administration being admonished them to abide by current bylaw. So in other words, that administration would admonish people to abide by current bylaw. As Counselor Barfus, if indeed he has used the word admonish, which seemed to me a little bit forceful.
Strong.
And he said, no, I don't remember using that word. So I'm wondering if what he meant was encourage.
Probably encourage, courage, I agree. I agree with that.
But I don't remember that.
So if those two changes are made on the minutes.
Encouragement's so strong, it's.
Yeah, it's a little bit less forceful.
It's a nudge.
Okay, so with those changes, I need a motion to approve the minutes. Counselor Creed?
Oh, okay.
Or Counselor Barfus?
Counselor Barfus, go ahead.
Come on, don't fight.
Okay.
Okay, I move to approve the minutes of the March 18th meeting, but amendments as.
As amended.
As amended.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All right, so we will go to six, bylaw and policy. This one needs to, this one refers to electricity distribution bylaw. I understand the last meeting, when I was not there, you passed the first by, the first reading, said bylaw 1649. So tonight, we need to entertain a second and third reading. So, Counselor.
I will move second reading on that, on that bylaw. I think we have pretty well discussed it, so I think we're.
I was quite pleased to see the way it is packaged, as good, as clear, as well-defined. So, all in favor? Thank you. So we pass second reading, and we need to.
I will move third reading on bylaw 1649.
Thank you, Counselor Pivoy, so all in favor? Thank you. All right, let's move to seven. We, just for your information, we're waiting for another delegation at 6:30, it might be a little bit later than that, so we're going to work as far as we can. Seven eight, affordable housing proposal. You could see in your background is that we had been interested in looking at the CICAM low-cost housing. It's a little bit more complicated than what it appears. ... of money upfront from the community in order for that project to take place. And in fact, ...... of the amount of risks that I'm not sure we're willing to take at this point. Your opinions?
My opinion is, I look at these, I don't think it's the towns. I think that the private sector out there, if they want to spend the money as an investment to do that, I think it's a private sector thing. I don't know, I, I read so many things about entitlement, and I get really discouraged with the amount of entitlement. People seem to think that the community or the governments owe them. I don't think that people are owed those type of things. I think as our taxpayers, we have to use our money wisely, but I think that there are people out there that have money, that would like to make investments, it's like, do you want the town to go in and build high-rise senior development? No, that's done by the private sector. And I think this is the same thing, that's my thing. I really like the idea, don't get me wrong, I looked and I thought, wow, this looks great. This is really, really good. But I don't like the idea of us as a town putting up the money with the risk that it might go.
Yeah, and then you become the rent collector.
Exactly.
That's a lot of risk for it.
That was my exact point, Mary, is I don't think the town should become a property manager.
No.
You know, because there's a lot of management going on there.
Right, yes, there is, and maintenance.
You know that.
Yeah.
You're involved in that.
Right. Counselor Edmonds, you want to say?
I'd like to see one of these developments before I would make a decision on it. What does it look like in 10 years? You know, how easy is it to paint a CICAM?
The best place you can see them is in Holland.
Central.
They're used as student housing. They're quite interesting, I must say, they're quite interesting.
Well, if you're going to look at them, if you like.
On your own, there is.
Yeah, yeah. I think my thoughts have been reflected very well by Counselor Barnes.
Yeah.
You know, it looked like, it looked like it would be a very interesting project if we had a university here, I think that would be good. I don't think the town should be doing it.
Right. So I really think there is no further movement regarding this.
Well, if I may, sad Jeff isn't here, but it looks like all they're looking for from us is a no obligation expression of interest, and then we can get more information. The information I'm curious about is, you know, and I understand we have to bring infrastructure to the lots, so I understand that that's our financial commitment, but.
And the land.
Well, the land, sure, and the land. And then, and then all of a sudden, we have apartments and infrastructure, you know, up and going at no cost to the town, even if it sat vacant for the next 10 years. I mean, that vacant lot wasn't going to earn us that money for the next 10 years either. So I'm thinking, you know, I agree with Counselor Bengry, and all of you, I agree, we should not be the landlord, you know, worried about these things. But it is a business opportunity that we could help facilitate, and we could put a landlord generating some revenue, employ two or three people, just in management and upkeep of buildings that we didn't have to pay for. So, you know, again, I'd like to see more numbers, I'd like to see return on investment. I'd like to, I, this is just me, I'm not saying we do it, I'm saying maybe we get a little more information and we find out.
Where'd you say, low, no cost to us? It's talking in here about us paying them the mortgage.
Well, yeah, that was in the background. See, in this section.
Yeah, there's a lot of cost to the town.
In this section, it doesn't say anything about the cost, but if you read what Jeff wrote in the background, and then there's this that was put on our desk, and I'm, I wanted to ask what this was about here, that looks.
Is that related to this?
We were talking about social housing, says provincial government walks away from.
Oh, that's, that's.
Oh, that's something.
Oh, that, oh, that has to do with taxes.
Sure.
Okay, that wasn't.
Counselor, if you can give me a second, Counselor Bengry. Counselor Pivoy, I think you may not have all the information on the front of you, but the cost to put those low-income rentals is quite significant, the cost upfront is quite significant. In fact, Jeff, I understand it's about 3.9 million dollars. And so that is the upfront cost to the municipality.
Gotcha.
I think 3.9 million, that's all there.
Well, for, yeah, for 3.9 million, we can build our own.
So, at this point, I, I understand your interest.
Well, yeah.
But I understand everybody's concern.
Sure.
I have similar concern. Counselor Bengry?
In my opinion, right now, the affordable housing, I have to agree with Counselor Barnes and everybody else's opinion, but I think we should turn this over to our development committee and say, hey, if we have a private contractor come in and wants to do affordable housing, this is the land, this is the area that's designated for that, and it's reserved for that, I think we need to explore that option and have that option open.
That is something that is a land use area, I do not know if we have that, sure, would you please?
Sure. Sorry, I was just talking to Bob there, see if he finished this one up. Sorry, I was just talking to Bob there, see if he can finish this one up. So you obviously have gone through a bit of it. And what I heard when I just came in, I think, is where I would lean personally, is council's given us direction to see if there's some private partners that want to partner in affordable housing in the community. The partnership level from them may be land, or maybe that they manage the facility and pay some of the capital costs. That's probably the direction I would most prefer. Now, this is something that was interesting to pursue, but I also agree with what was said for three point nine million, that we would have to mortgage, we would have to borrow from CMHC and pay that mortgage. We could probably tailor make a proposal that was maybe a better fit for the community. I don't know that for sure, but that's a lot, a lot of money.
Okay, so in that case, what is the direction we want to give administration? Do we want them to pursue the idea of low-cost housing, considering land areas in a community, and contact developers? Is that something that would be the direction you would want this council to go?
I think we need to meet mayor as a council and look at our land use bylaw, and then consider as a council where we would like to have this area designated.
Okay, there's already some areas that are empty and ready to have something possibly?
My first thoughts on, you know, low-cost housing is who would be the clients?
And that's another.
And in Carstens, my only view would probably be like for seniors, and there would be some seniors. On the other hand, when I talked to the people at the senior center, when we were doing our age-friendly community survey, somebody said, well, we've lost some people who have moved to some of these complexes in Lethbridge, and they are not low-cost. So I'm thinking that there's a market that's not low-cost housing. There may be some market for low-cost housing in our community, but we just drafted a little land use bylaw that allows for, you know, garage suites, basement suites, you know, et cetera, that could address low-cost housing for seniors to live, you know, near families and things like that. So I think in some sense, we've already addressed that possibility of low-cost housing in the community. I don't, you know, if it's going to be in apartments, and if it's going to be seniors, then it's got to be close to the core services, it's got to be close to the temple. That's what the seniors would be looking for, probably.
That, Councilor Bingham?
I think previous council addressed an issue with a private individual that addressed council. And an area that was designated for that type of housing was down by the Royal Bank, just east of the Royal Bank, in that area there, I think.
Private land now, isn't it?
Yeah, I think it is private land.
Okay, there is also another segment of the population, like young married people with young children who are starting their lives, and who need also what I would call lower-cost housing. I mean, housing that are affordable, maybe that would be a better word.
There again, I still say that it's got to be the private sector. Because soon as a town or a municipality gets involved in rental units, then you've got the private sector who say now, it's an unfair competition, you know, because the town's using the taxpayer's money and at a better rate than what we can borrow from the bank to do this. When I look at these, I mean, I have to say again, it looks like a pretty exciting project, but certainly wouldn't be good viable for seniors, because these are all stacked on top of each other. I mean, they'd be dead before they got halfway up the stairs.
So that's a very good point, too. I looked at it and wondered if there was some escalator or.
I'm glad somewhere up the.
That's exciting.
All right. Okay, so you don't want to pursue none of it, all right?
I would think if it's such a good thing, we'd have people lining up.
lining them, yeah, well, it depends. All right, let's go to seven B, garbage contractor subcommittee. Here is a need for two councilors to sit on a subcommittee.
Which one are we on?
We're on seven B, garbage contractors.
It's just a macro. I'd be happy to sit on that.
Essentially, Councilor Pivoy would be a good choice. All I want to ask you is to honestly be a total online from the present contractors, so that you're not biased in any ways. And always relatives in the community, because among my allies, you are the better decision you will make. So for that reason, I would not be part of that committee.
Okay, what was your reasoning?
I know our contractor's wife, and will not be influenced, therefore, I stay away.
We all kind of know the contractors.
Yeah, but I mean, you can know, you can know more or less. You have to make sure that you feel comfortable you would be able to make a totally unbiased decision.
He gave my kids suckers, I'm not going to let that.
I need another person. Councilor Creed, you have worked on this issue?
Yeah, I was on that, actually, last time the contract came.
But you've got experience in it.
Well, I don't know, but.
We're biased the Lorenz.
No, he's biased.
I might be biased now.
No, I don't think.
We know who.
Okay, all right, you decide.
I'd be glad to do it, I'm not related to him in any way.
Okay, all right, Councilor Barnes and Councilor Pivoy, there we go.
He's my neighbor, so.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, that's good, you.
All right, for this question, okay.
He thanks my gurries.
Seven C. So, Councilor Pivoy and Councilor Barnes, Jeff will be on that committee.
Do we need a motion to that effect?
I would say maybe it is, would be best.
Okay, I will make the motion that we appoint Councilor Barnes and Councilor Pivoy to be the committee to assess, review the garbage contract. Can we get the vote on that, too?
Yes. All in favor? Thank you. I understand we have a few submissions.
Nothing's in yet, you know.
Nothing is in yet.
We don't have a date when we're meeting, then?
All right, that's fine.
Well, it closes April fifteenth, so I'll contact.
So sometime after that.
Go that next week, yeah.
I'll be away on the twenty-first.
Seven, seven C, AUMA linear assessment recommendations. As you can see, there has been a last AUMA resolution that we had made as towns to have a review of the linear assessment, the way it is presently done. And as you can just well imagine, the MDs are pushing back and really want to keep the status quo because it's advantageous to them. Except, there is something there that has been added by AUMA. It's not to look at intermunicipal agreement, which I think it's a very good thing. And we had tried to create a little bit of a review of needs in the past, and we had used Harold Johns' word. And when we were at the last legal seminar, that is the person that had been used in a leduke? Am I correct?
Ochotoks.
Ochotoks, sorry.
What else?
Oh, yeah, the MDF foothills. Yeah, when we were at Brownlee. So the model that they used was exactly the model that was used in our town, and that the county brought up. So what I really think is important for me would be that AUMA draft a little bit of a kit or something of that sort, in order to give us some base point as to how do you get a proper study done? What should be a template? What should be in a proper study as reference, so that all people who are trying to do that intermunicipal or similar review as we're doing are doing it on the same ground? I would appreciate a guideline of that sorts, because it would help to create comparatives. Just a thought.
I'm trying to remember what Harold said about, or what was said that Harold accomplished for Ochotoks. Jeff, can you give us some enlightenment on that? Did he get them more cost sharing for the community, or?
That's fantastic.
Okay, so.
So Harold just developed essentially the similarities between his proposal to us and the MDF foothills in Ochotoks was the formula. So Harold just used the same formula here that he used at those. Now, if you remember, Harold actually, and I may have it backwards, but worked for one of the municipalities and then was a councillor for one of the other municipalities. So he had a pretty intimate knowledge of both municipalities when they hired him to do that study. And so he employed that same formula here, which, one of the unique things about his formula is that it considers depreciation in the annual requisition from the MD. That's to try and keep the MD requisitions level, that the urbans aren't asking for, you know, a major amount one year, nothing the next year, and then a big amount. So it was intended to do that. The other thing that's different in the MDF foothills than it would be for us is that the MDF foothills has since built recreation infrastructure. So the formula goes both ways. It creates a net amount at the end of the day by crediting each municipality for the recreation facilities of the other, which was considered in ours, but obviously, the MDF Carstens, the County of Carstens, doesn't have the same recreation infrastructure that we were considering in our formula, because we didn't consider everything under the sun. We just had specific facilities and certain things. So they never mentioned Harold at the Brownlee conference, but Harold was the one with his relationship there that developed that intermunicipal formula that they're employing today.
In fact, we were smiling, thinking, that was a gun.
Yeah.
May I just need a motion?
Just hang on, I haven't finished my question yet. I have another question regarding that same thing. So who, who can make that decision, whether or not they enter into an agreement to?
That's a very good point, Councilor, because, because more and more, the province is looking at kind of legislating that aspect, but is not yet in the MGA. It might get there. In between, they said that if a county or a town municipality don't want to really work together, that they can become involved in your affairs and kind of sit you both together and set that the way it's going to run. So I don't really know that I like that situation that, Bob, but at the end of the day.
But I remember at AUMA talking about this very thing with another councillor from another, I'm trying to remember what the MD was, it was a municipal district, but they were saying that their main town is such a little tiny town, but yet they have so much linear stuff, the oil pipelines, the gas pipelines, all through their area that that little municipal district got all. Was it Rocky View? I can't remember, but there's lots of money, and they'll never spend all the money that they're getting.
But there is an issue. The issue is that AUMA in their proposal there is talking about regional sharing, cost sharing. And what they're asking is, what is the region? What is the region that you want to have cost sharing of that linear?
Who's got the most, we could.
It's Rob the Body, you.
You know, is it adjacent? Is it adjacent boundary?
Or that's still good.
And how far, and how far away from your direct county do you go?
Number of formulas that were proposed, it would make.
Right, do you go, do you involve Glenwood, Hill Spring? Is that what you involve in the whole stuff? And doesn't make sense for us?
You can sympathize with the province, because you have urban municipalities who don't want a formula put in place, because their agreements are probably far more generous now than they would be under a prescribed formula. You're talking urbans within Greenview and Opportunity, those two MDs have incredibly gratuitous intermunicipal agreements, incredibly lucrative intermunicipal agreements. And that's because the MD still needs to have a tax, but they have so much linear, they really don't need to tax. But out of principle, they want to keep a reasonable tax rate. So all that difference goes to the urbans within them. Now, to be fair, our municipality isn't one of those. It's simply not, and that's why they're looking at a regional approach. If you have a formula in your region, you can deal more with the specific financial reality of your region. Because ours isn't what Opportunities is, or Greenview's. And those are incredibly lucrative counties.
I mean, the county has some linear, but doesn't have tons of.
Yeah, no, we shouldn't try and say that they have the same fiscal benefit of linear southern municipalities. That's not fair. So it's tough for the province, because you have very lucrative arrangements already in place. You have good arrangements that are reasonable and in place, and you have some that are just kind of gentleman agreements, like ours would be now, we get forty thousand every year from the county, and that's kind of our handshake, there's not a paperwork on that agreement, it's just been goodwill from the county, so very difficult. I think the crux of the paper and the letter from the AUMA is, we have one more shot to give them feedback into this before it goes to the province in the fall, via the Mayor's Caucus in the fall. So if you as a council, it's not something I don't think needs to even be formulated tonight.
No.
But if we have something outside of what they've proposed, that's our window to submit.
Yeah, for example, the need for a similar formula across the whole.
I was going to say that my motion would be that we request AUMA to formulate a basic template of linear assessment, and how we work it, or our formula for linear assessment.
Yeah, well, I think for cost sharing of the.
Well, perhaps what it looks like, instead of being uniform across the province, maybe it's a tiered program, where you say, hey, in these circumstances, this is appropriate, in these circumstances here, and, you know, for Carstens, Carstens County, it might be in a different category of an agreement.
Okay, why don't you think about that a little bit more? We're not in a hurry, we'll bring it back.
You technically have a motion on the table?
No, no, I was just going to say that my motion would say.
He said if he had a motion, if he had a motion. But thank you. Now I pay attention. Thank you. All right, so seven D, Town of Tabor. Now here is an interesting proposal that has a little bit of caution that we should, we should approve in principle. But the caution that we need to do is that they request for the program that are trying to do in recycling, what they are trying to commit, the municipalities that have been sent that proposal is to commit to have the recycled goods brought up to Tabor. But what we do not know, as you know, right now, the revenues go right back to the handicap society. What we do not know under this model is if the handicap society would still be able to claim that money for waste diverted from the landfill. And maybe, Jeff, you want to talk a little bit more about this?
So like I said, my background as a council, at the time I prepared the agenda, I didn't have a response back from Tabor. So since then, I have talked to Corey Ormfeldt from the Town of Tabor. My concern to Corey was, Corey, if you want a commitment in this motion of all of our items, and they didn't, they do want that, you see it in their letter, they're trying to get a gauge for how many tons this facility would be managing in order to do a feasibility study, and I respect that and I get that. But my concern was, Corey, if I, if I commit, my council commits all that tonnage to you, and part of the feasibility of the facility says that the waste diversion credit goes to Tabor, the Town of Carstens now lost our collection. So the waste diversion funds in large part the ability for us to collect recyclables. And if, if part of the feasibility says it must go to Tabor, I now have a collection issue. I have a sorting issue, I have a bailing issue, I have a transportation issue. And so that might work for the Tabor facility, but then it doesn't work for Carstens anymore, because I don't have the ability to have my association collect it. So he spoke to their mayor, and they understand that a little bit, and have said that our motion can be amended, that we support the grant, simply in principle, and don't commit our materials to Tabor, barring the outcome of the feasibility study or how that might look. But we can still support it, we can still give them our numbers and say hypothetically, we would handle and divert, you know, however many tons a year of recyclables we divert, so that they can manage that. But they agree that it maybe isn't reasonable at this point to commit all of our tonnage to a hypothetical facility.
Yes.
Okay, at this point in time, the wastes, the recyclables are. At this point in time, the, the, the wastes, the recyclables are collected by the Handicap Association. Are they sold by the Handicap Association as well?
Yes. Now, let me qualify that. There's, there's very little market for any recyclables.
Yes, I realize.
So I say sold, they almost cost recover shipping, is basically what they're doing.
So where do they make their money? Do we contract for them to do that?
Yeah. So we pay them, and the waste diversion credit from the solid waste.
So I, I, I guess what we have to look at is down the road, if the Tabor thing comes to fruition, we're still gonna have to use the Handicap Association for the collection, and we're gonna have to be reimbursed somehow.
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't say have to. We charge a small fee on our NMAX bills every month for recycling, four dollars, I think, three dollars and twenty cents, if I'm pulling the numbers correctly.
So I guess basically what's gonna happen is you, you have to get the stuff that the Handicap Association, Handicap Association handles here, and then transport it to Tabor. That's where we have to figure out who's paying that cost.
That's right. So if the feasibility of Tabor says, "We need all the waste diversion credits from all the landfill authorities," that starts to make less sense for us on the collection level. And they don't want to jeopardize or pull the rug out from the Handicap Association for that source of revenue. However, I think, and I have nothing to substantiate this, it's purely anecdotal, but I believe that having a facility that has a greater mass and bulk of recyclables may help find more lucrative end users, potentially. Because right now, our little, our little group is trying to deal with twelve bales of cardboard. And how do we get rid of it, and who will take it? Well, what if Tabor deals with a hundred and twenty in the same timeframe? Maybe now there's a market that opens up, and it's more lucrative than what it is now. So I support that regional approach to getting rid of the end product, I really do. I just didn't want it to jeopardize our current collection.
Yeah. Councillor?
Yeah, I just, I attended the Mayor's and Reeves for you, and this, they made this proposal at the, at the Mayor's and Reeves conference, and it was very interesting. And I think it kind of supports what Jeff said, is that, is that they're looking at, you know, some economies of scale with, with, you know, with, with doing this, and, and perhaps some enhanced recycling. For instance, the plastics, you can't sell a whole bunch of just bulk plastics, but if you chip, you know, if you, if you pelletize it or, or plasticize it, then all of a sudden another market opens up. So, you know, if, if in, if this facility was to become lucrative, where, where they could actually, you know, pay us something for sending them the stuff, or, or, you know, that would be better than what the Handicaps Association is doing now, you know, then it would be an advantage to us. If it's, if it, on the other hand, is going to cost us money, then it's not going to be an advantage. So, yeah, I think, I think in principle, we support the idea, but we gotta be a little cautious.
So, question, and then maybe we'll go through the motion.
When I was the Director of the Handicaps Association and set up the recycling plant, I can remember back that we were, we were under the Recycling Alberta. And we had a good market for cardboard, because it went to the ITO shingle plant in, in Calgary. And it was a very good market. We were able to just sell our product. But as time went on, I can remember we had seventy-five to a hundred bales of cardboard sitting up, up in that, outside of that plant, and there was no markets. Finally, we had to ship it to Seattle. And it, it was expensive. And so this is the same thing now, you know? The Handicaps Association is doing a fabulous job right now. And they've got the manpower to do it. And they're doing it for us. And I agree with Jeff, that I don't want to have some kind of a knee-jerk reaction and take this away from the Handicaps Association.
But we, we need to try to understand the whole of the project before we commit to it. But in principle, we can definitely support the project, so if somebody wants, yes.
If I might, what I would propose is, they gave a pre-written motion, but we can stop after the words "managing partner for this initiative," and just not put, and commit to direct recyclable material from our municipality.
Would you like to, would you like to really do it?
So, at the regular meeting of all the preamble, be it resolved that the Town of Carson supports the Town of Tabor's application for funding from the ACP Intermunicipal Collaboration Grant, or the grants as applicable, to study the feasibility of materials recovery facility in Southern Alberta to be located in the Town of Tabor, and supports the Town of Tabor as applicant and managing partner for this initiative.
Okay, that's it. Yeah.
But what does it say in principle?
Well, this is just now supporting their grant. I think you can, you can wholeheartedly do that.
You support just half of the...
Yeah. We'll just omit the materials.
Commit the commits to it, direct recyclable material, just to omit that.
Okay. If you're comfortable with that motion, then maybe let me know.
I'll do that.
Okay, so you will, okay. So we will have that motion recorded, and it'll be, be proposed by Councillor Benbury.
So this time you can leave out the line on purpose, on purpose.
All in favor? Thank you. I'm kind of curious to see what will happen there. We will skip seven E, as we need to have Mr. Gibbons make his proposal. We will go to seven F, AUMA and granting new, new of taxes. And now you have to refer to what was put on your table. We have indeed an issue, if you remember, AUMA had put a proposal forward that they wanted the government to reinstate the, what was that called? No, they wanted, this one...
Grants in lieu of taxes.
It was, yeah, the grant in lieu of taxes for the lodges and...
Social housing.
Social housing, okay, fair. And the, the government of our day has rejected that proposal, feeling that that would be better of using that money to build more facilities. However, this represents for our town something like twenty-seven thousand dollars. And for each town that is around us, it represents some even more money than that. So it's significant for a town when you look at our tax base, it's significant. The government can always say it never was intended to last forever, but you know what happens? You use it for so long, and then you wonder where you don't have it anymore.
On the comical side of that, Mayor, when we, Councillor Creed, myself, I had a meeting with the Smith Foundation, and one of the, one of the board members says, "Well, that's quite a blow to the Town of Carson." And I said, "Yeah." I said, "Maybe we'll take the, take that as a situation, and we'll remove that thirty thousand dollars off our requisition." Because it only affects the Town of Carson, it does not affect the county.
Yeah, exactly. So essentially, what you have here given to you is a template that AUMA has provided, where we insert the name of our municipality, the amount of money that the guilt funding is, and go on. So if you, if you think that we should have a motion to that effect, to have that letter sent to the government and to AUMA, now is the time to go ahead.
Okay, before I say anything, I, I just want to say, if, if we had twenty-seven thousand dollars eliminated from, from the grant, who pays for that? You're gonna raise the rents to the seniors to the twenty-seven thousand dollars?
No.
No. But it's the taxpayer that's gonna have to pay it, right?
Well, that's exactly right, so you're almost double, double tap.
So, that's exactly, yeah, that's exactly what I was thinking too. And so, you know, the squeaky wheel disagrees, right? And, and if we don't continue to lobby when these things happen, then they'll just think that, hey, it's just fine, we can do, we can do this, and then if we want the next item, and they want to cut back there, and they just keep on downloading on our communities, then we're having a difficulty.
Just to point out, councillor, I want to be clear, when you formulate a motion here, they've suggested three things, and, and one of the three I'm not crazy about, but one is an op-ed for the newspaper. That's the first template. I don't know, you can look at that and see if you want to put that out. It's pretty tough on the provincial government, though, it is. The second is the letter to the minister and some CCs, and the third is to engage your MLA with key discussion points. So as you're deliberating on your motion, if you could be specific as to any or all of those, that would be great.
I...
Mayor, I'd like to ask, ask our CAO, the thirty thousand dollars roughly that's taken out of our taxes, what is that basically in percentage?
That'd be one, two percent? Five percent, little over two million in tax revenue? Can you do that?
Over the provision?
No, 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 no. It could be just over percentage.
If you look at it, it's about fifty thousand dollars. Think of it in terms of houses that we have to raise to collect taxes from in order to get there. You're talking about eight houses?
Eight to ten.
Eight to ten houses, depending on what type. So it's significant to our town.
So when we look at our mill rate and so forth, we have to consider that.
Well, we, it's already in a budget because we already knew...
I know, I know it is, but at the same token, we have to, we have to recognize that.
And that's essentially what the op-ed is saying, the piece is that you as the general taxpayers have to now pay this, so you should petition.
Well, I, I won't go that, I won't go that far.
Mathematically, it's correct. It has to go somewhere.
Yeah, all right.
Guilt funding, we should put as much guilt on the province.
All right. So, so if you feel that the letter number two, rather than the template for op-ed, if the letter to Minister of Seniors and Housing is the way to go, personally, I would prefer this type of thing, and I would like it to be CC, obviously to the local MLA, and also to AUMA, Lisa Holmes, who is the President. I feel comfortable with that letter. So would you want this, any of the motion?
Okay, I will, I will move that, that we send a letter to the Minister...
Of Seniors and Housing?
Of Seniors and Housing.
Regarding, regarding the guilt program?
Yeah, regarding the, the, you know, the removal of the, the...
Grants in lieu of taxes.
The grant in lieu of taxes, that, that we let them know that, you know, that's a significant blow to our community, and that we also CC our MLA as well.
Yeah. Okay, so essentially, your motion would be to support a letter to Ministers of Seniors and Housing?
Yep.
Okay, regarding the guilt...
Yeah, copy to Mr. Grant Hunter.
Yeah. Okay, so, all in favor? Thank you. All right, moving along, seven G, the power terms of reference. Okay, here was a little bit of discussion that came, and from one of the Blood Tribe councillor, Bill Whatwood, which was very interesting. It said, "In many different committees, you have a person of the council that is designated as the alternate person that could vote by proxy, if you want, for the person that is there." And what they are recommending as a, as a committee, if I got it right, is that under the voting area, that we would allow for proxy voting, but only for elected officials of each party. In other words, in our case, we have two elected officials, two non-elected. Only those two could be replaced by a member of council that could vote.
The elected officials.
Yeah. And the same for them. So they do not want it to be members just anywhere replacing them. And I thought, you know what, there is wisdom in that. In many committees, there is a delegate that we can really replace and vote. And so if you're okay with that, we would amend those terms with this added.
I'm okay with that, because the elected officials, because of our committee reports, are up on the discussions of the powwow.
Right.
We, we know what the business of the powwow is.
Yeah.
But if you leave it up to a member at large, they don't know the business of the powwow.
Right, exactly.
So I agree with that elected official.
Okay, so what I may need in order to, for us to change the terms, is to have a motion to approve proxy voting by elected official delegate.
I'll make that motion, that we, we approve a recommend, a motion to...
Amend the terms of reference of the power committee?
Amend the terms of reference for the powwow committee, in the fact that we have a...
Proxy voting.
Proxy voting for an elected official, an appointed elected official.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All right, so now let's go to nine, we're moving on pretty good. Committee reports, so there is where a lot of people have a lot of questions, so that's good. Seven A, committee reports. So there is a question under the SCSS, Councillor Benbury, that you wanted to bring forward.
In our last SCSS meeting, there is a conference coming up in November, the SCSS Alberta Conference, or thing, I think it's a two-day conference or a three-day, two-day.
I don't recall, councillor.
Anyway, it's in November, and I would like to attend that, that conference, it's in Edmonton. And I'm asking councillor for approval to, to have councillor pay for my per diems, and SCSS will pay for the mileage and other expenses, hotels and so forth, and grant me the permission to attend that conference.
Okay, and you will report?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so essentially, the cost you are looking for is per diem and mileage?
No, no.
Or no mileage?
SCSS will pay the mileage and all the hotels and so forth, yeah.
Per diem and meals.
Okay, so per diem, so we need to have a little bit more information regarding the length of your conference, we don't have it.
I believe it's two days. And it's in Edmonton. Yes, so that amounts to four days.
Okay, why don't we put a motion up to a maximum of three per diem? Would that work? Because if we don't have the exact amount, I can't decide.
Well, if he's gonna be gone, you've got two travel days of this Edmonton. We already have talked about a policy allowing for the travel days as a per diem. So if it's a two-day conference and two days travel...
Well, I don't know, we need to figure it out.
But I'm just saying, if it is, then it should be four days.
Well, that's what we're trying to figure out. Yeah, because it's six hours to Edmonton at least.
Yeah.
Which represents a day, six hours and another day.
That's the way I'd begin working right here.
Yeah.
You need policy manual?
It'd be three nights in a hotel.
No, I think so. It won't be really...
Yeah, because you'd get there asleep.
Okay. Can we maybe come back to that after, after administration has the figure for you?
Sure.
We'll, we'll keep it, we'll keep it on the back burner, we're not ignoring you.
It doesn't happen till November, so...
Okay, so we're, we're not ignoring you.
We'll bring it up at our next meeting.
So, Councillor Pivoy, you wanted to talk about the Waste Authority?
Yes, thank you. So we had two, two reports needed there, one from just the, with the minutes attached from the, from the Waste Authority, and their, their busy bodies getting some things done. But the second one, though, I, was my report on the workshop at Lethbridge, about what they're doing, and what their municipality is doing. And when I went to write up that report, I just, I decided, and I thought I'd come and ask, if, if no one is opposed to it, I think I'd prefer to do that as maybe a five to seven-minute PowerPoint presentation at a council meeting. And I already have the PowerPoint slides that they gave me, so it's Lethbridge's slides.
Sure, why not?
And I thought, rather than try to summarize those and put them all into a little one-page, I'd rather show you what they're doing, and explain kind of maybe how that affects us and what we should be thinking about.
Do you want to put it on the next CCW?
I can do it, yeah, I can do it as a CCW report, it'll just take five to seven minutes.
Excellent, thank you very much, appreciate that. Councillor Barnes, you wanted to talk about fire?
Yeah, you asked me some questions about some money that came into the fire hall when they were collecting money from insurance, all that. So I got ahold of the chief, fire chief, and he said that when they collect that money, that it just goes back into the general funds, and it is definitely considered when it comes to requisitions, or they'll take that off, and so that we, we're not giving them double money, they're not using it as a fundraiser, he reassured me of that.
Okay, that's good.
That was basically it.
Well, we, we needed that knowledge, that's good. Any... Any other, uh, comments?
Yeah, just one question for councillor Pivoy regarding Chief Mountain Solid Waste Authority. This really doesn't have to do so much with the Chief Mountain Solid Waste Authority, but with building relations between, uh, uh, communities. I, I noted in the, in the minutes that, uh, there were two, uh, two members from the, from the Blood Tribe who actually attended the, the last authority meeting. Were they, were they well received and did they participate?
They were, they were. It's, uh, it's a little different, they, they don't send elected representatives. Everyone else on the board is an elected representative. Those two are actually from the tribe administration, so they're just, uh, sent to go and, and then report back. And we welcome them, we, we love having them, it's, uh, they were...
Well, it's an amazing, uh, movement forward. I am so happy to hear about that.
It's great to have them.
Yeah, we used to see that.
Yes, it's fantastic.
We told them, if you want to send three, send three.
Alright, so, any other comments regarding the reports, councillor?
Yes, uh, I did have a Mormon Trail, uh, report there and I apologize, please. We had our Mormon Trail meeting yesterday afternoon. Uh, I will pass these along so the council can look at them. This is the development of the, the start of the advertising. This will be handed out in the, uh, they suggested it at our, our Heritage Days celebrations and so forth.
Parades.
But it's too soon to, uh, close to our talk law. And so, I'd like permission from council to take our handouts and put them in our tourist information, uh, area and also give our commodities to the other parades of Sterling, McGrath and Raymond, which are held in July. And it would be more information for those individuals attending those parades.
Sure.
Put them in our tourist information and maybe in the Remington heritage, uh, information area and anywhere that the town has, uh, if we can put some of these cards in there.
That shouldn't be a problem. Do, do you agree, councillor? That is, okay, so I don't, I don't think we need a motion, or do you want to?
No, I'm just, I'm just asking permission, yeah.
No, alright, so let's go and, uh, nine B, Valo Report. By the way, thank you very much for your report. And councillor Creed, thank you for doing my report. While I was gone, appreciate that. Nine B, Valo Report, February, uh, two thousand and sixteen, is there anything there that you want to talk about?
Well, the, the life of scum is just shocking.
Yeah, the scum, the scum's around the way, expelled in the town.
Yeah, they'll be coming.
Alright, you have, you have a C A O report, uh, thank you very much for that report. Quite good, quite comprehensive. Anything that you would like to ask the judge about?
Yeah, it wasn't on your report, but, uh, I'm always interested in what the public works is doing. They're putting a lot of chip coat on some of the, the roads around, uh, you know, the lion part, the, the walking trail. I noticed, uh, uh, quite a bit of chip coating up there. Also noticed a, a boulder or something that they're putting in. Maybe it's on the community irrigation line, just, just by the Remington, uh, that bridge that the Remington carriage uses.
By the ninth and the bridge there?
Yeah. No, no, no.
No, it's the, the carriage bridge.
The carriage, the carriage bridge down there by the, by the back of the Remington Center there, I noticed a...
Oh, that's their connection into the community irrigation line. They're gonna connect for their irrigation.
Oh, that'll be the Remington connect, connection for, for their, okay.
Is that coming out of the level irrigation?
No, it comes out of our community irrigation line, yeah, which, I guess it does.
Ultimately, yeah.
Ultimately come from that line, so.
Alright.
I just noticed those.
Oh, after, yeah.
Okay.
You don't, you don't carry it?
Um, unless, uh, you had some things about the, the swimming pool and I, I just kind of briefly mentioned that in case, you know, the province or, or, or the powers that be start pressuring us on washrooms like they are with the schools, if, if, you know, we should look at that and, and try to make our more pri- more privacy in, in, you know, the, the, the changing facility so that people have private, uh, changing areas.
But councillor Creed and I run into each other at the hardware store on the weekend and so, of course, we don't work for a while. And, uh, I think it's a good point, I, I've reviewed the, we're starting right now, they're doing the construction drawings to the point that we can get quotes on the building rental. But it, I hadn't thought about potentially looking at future legislation that we've seen with the bill ten and what school division's dealing with, when it comes to our public facilities. Especially like at the hockey rink where we have change areas and at the pool where we have change areas. So, um, something we'll look at before we go to tender for sure, that we have that accommodated. Just so you know, in the preliminary drawing, there is, uh, I believe there's four family washrooms in this plus a number of, uh, partitioned change rooms in each locker room. So, it's better than it is, would it be compliant? Don't know, and that's something we may want to read the play on a little bit, I agree.
Yeah.
Well, and, and just on that note, maybe just, since you're constructing, go floor to ceiling maybe on those partitions.
And that.
That adds additional privacy before we need it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good points.
Uh, so my question, though, was related to the solar study. I know that we were not expecting that until tomorrow, are we optimistic that's coming?
I, I got ahold of him, I said, "Look, I gotta know where you're at." He said, "You will have the deliverable by afternoon of the twenty-third."
And then, when, when will we hear about it?
Well, I hope to bring it to C C W, which I would like to bring, I hope that it's completed.
It's due in two weeks.
Yeah.
Right, is that the fifth of April, I believe? Yep, yeah, I anticipate councillor Barnes, there's gonna be a number of questions, some things I want straightened out before I present it.
Okay.
Um, I think I put in my report, I, I didn't, I don't recall. I've had Kevin Phillips working with Skyfire now because we, we've realized the big holdup was actually an unnecessary holdup. Skyfire was looking for a lot of information from Fortis with regards to the cost to distribute back through their infrastructure. And I had Kevin talk to Tim at Skyfire for a while and Kevin quickly realized that this was intended to directly connect back into the Fortis distribution and not the town distribution.
Right.
And it's our intention to burn up as much as we can within our own system prior to putting in the access back on the Fortis system.
Yeah.
So, that, that whole discussion changed and perhaps I didn't explain that well enough to Tim, although that was the intent, that we had this kind of reduced distribution transmission charges as well.
Yeah, and tell them.
So, that I think is sorted, but I'm sure I'm gonna have, uh, ten days or so of getting a few things figured out and cleaned up before I present it to council.
Thank you, that's great. While we have our delegation, Mr. Gibbons, if you want to take the podium and help us understand your, your point.
Okay, so, it was, uh, it was August or September last year. My wife was driving down the road, um, on the golf course, heading east. And so, it was about at the end of the driving range. Um, she'd passed the driving range and then she got hit by a golf ball on that side of the car. At first, we thought it was the driving range, but I don't, we don't think so. After we went and looked at where she got hit, it was probably, um, the hole that's right behind the driving range. Somebody was, who knows where. So, we're in the situation where the person that hit us probably doesn't know that they hit us and we don't feel like we're, we're at fault. You could compare it to, when I used to play softball, I would park my truck at the softball field and when I'd pull up, I would think to myself, "Okay, usually, left field line, sometimes right field line, I'm gonna try not to park there." Um, but if I did get hit, I was playing softball, I had intentionally parked at a softball diamond. I haven't golfed in ten years, probably because my game's not very good. And so, I don't think it's that situation. I don't think it's like I, I knew that there was a chance that I was gonna get nailed or my wife was gonna get hit by the golf ball. We were driving on a public highway and, you know, she got hit. So, the person that did it probably doesn't know that they've even done. So, I can't go find that person, they can't find me. And, so, I, I think it, the, the responsibility and the liability does lie somewhere beyond myself. I don't know if it's the town or the golf course. I would like to say that I think Jeff has been very helpful with us. Anytime I've phoned him, he's either answered or called me back. So, I really appreciate, um, your town administration and how they've attempted to hear my concerns. I feel less satisfied with the golf course, ten phone calls, no return, I'm not so happy with them. But, um, anyway, so, that's, that's where I'm at. Do you have any questions or, yeah?
I, I, I do, 'cause I look at that, that's really provincial highway. It's not even a town street. It's going through town, it's a provincial highway, so that's where I have a little bit of a difficulty there because they're the ones that are responsible for the highway.
Jeff?
One thing that Mr. Gibbons and I have talked about is you have a private citizen on a provincial secondary highway adjacent to land the town owns, operated by a private entity. It could hardly get more messy, to be frank.
It's really messy, I see the drama.
While I haven't been able to give Mr. Gibbons the satisfaction he wanted of just stroking a check for the damage because it's really this unique piece where we have a number of jurisdictions and a number of parties at play here. Um, and like he said, there's, and then there's that individual that hit him too, that probably doesn't know that. And so, it, it's a tricky one.
Was it a rock or?
It was a golf.
It's a golf ball.
If he's that poor of a golfer, he shouldn't be out there. Well, no, they're driving.
But I appreciate, uh, Mr. Gibbons' concern, right? You hit, I'm hit on a road with a pebble like this that breaks my windshield this year, three times. And, uh, uh, it's, it's frustrating, but where do you go at the end? I'm the man who's responsible for paying all the costs.
Insurance, whatever.
Well, yeah, but you have a deductible, don't you?
Curious, was that, was it like body damage or was it glass or?
It hit the, uh, one of the rear fenders to view a conclave, so below the rear window, that back fender on the right-hand side of the passenger seat.
Basically body damage then?
Yeah, so it hit that, took it to, to the, the shop and they said, "What we'll do is, we'll, we'll quote you on these two attempts. Attempt one is just try to, it's called a P D R, paintless dent repair, pop it out, maybe it'll look good." Um, but he said, "It's deep, it's a golf ball, it's deep. Usually, it has to be kind of a shallow dent for that to work." So, he attempted that, but it just popped out the other way, so, and so that's a hundred-dollar fix. But, uh, to then redo that whole fender, which is what they have to do, it came out to, I think it's four hundred and sixty or four hundred and seventy. They quoted me five thirty-five, gave me a big deal. Um, so, yeah, now, yeah, where it lands, I, I understand the complications. Uh, is it a town-owned golf courses? See, I, I would argue that you've got a hole that is pointing at the road, right? And so, it could happen again, I mean, so this guy's not a very good golfer 'cause he went way over the putting green, but, but anyway, he went over, but it's, it's aiming at the highway. It's not like the driving range that is parallel, I mean, this thing is aimed right at the road and it just happened to be, we hit right at that point, right? So...
Okay, Mr. Gibbons, we heard you, you're not a happy customer. And we sympathize with you and, uh, I'm not a happy customer either when I get my pebble, those pebbles that I don't expect violently break my windshield and get very frustrated. And it's, it's, uh, a point we're going to take into consideration. We, as council, will talk about the issue, that you will have total satisfaction. I cannot guarantee we'll have to talk.
Yeah, one thing I would say to that is, uh, the, uh, when I go on the highway and I get a pebble, I can accept that.
Can you?
Yeah, because that, but I don't think this is that situation, 'cause this isn't a pebble.
I don't accept a pebble either.
This is a golf ball.
To give you an idea, we're talking about Belgium today. In Belgium, they have trucks with sugarbeads, people like that. And they'll tell you, "Driver, beware."
Yeah.
If you get it, don't come after the driver or the sugarbead truck, won't they? And it, it's unfortunate, but in Europe, that's pretty well the way it is. It's not fun, because those things are monstrous and tense.
Like rocks.
Yeah, they do. Thank you so much, appreciate your presentation. Alright, so that brings me, us back to exactly that very point. Seven E.
Just for clarity on that.
Time and reimbursement request.
Did we say Mr. Gibbons was a county resident?
No, he's town resident, okay.
Okay.
So...
Councillor Benries?
Mayor, right. There's houses down at Paradise Canyons and condos and everything else down there, beautiful. And they're right on the golf course. And they're constantly getting golf balls through their windows, golf balls on their side, you know. I don't know how Paradise Canyons handles it. Colhurst, or Coldale has the same, uh, situation with, with land, land lakes. I don't know, it's, 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 it's just something I think you have to accept.
I actually just, you know, another story, 'cause, uh, I, I, uh, visited a lady that lives along, uh, eight, eight Avenue and, uh, she got a basement window broken by a golf ball, you know, that came and hit, hit the basement window. So, I mean, it's not, it's not unique. Uh, my, my, my thoughts would be to, uh, do a little research on, on, on what other golf courses, you know, do they accept liability for, you know, for golf balls coming out of the golf, out of the golf course? Is that, you know, is that a standard practice or not? And, uh, if we find out what the standard practice is, then at least it gives us a guideline.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's not a bad point, Jim.
I get, clarify something in my mind here is, uh, yeah, it, I thought I heard Steve say that this didn't come from the driving range, but it came from a hole. And then here it says the driving range.
Well, it changed, it changed.
Yeah, he actually, when I called him earlier today to make sure he was coming, he says, "You know, what hole number is that?" They, they went down and kind of checked it out. You have the driving range, which if you're a lefty like me, you can slice off on tonight that.
Yes.
So, that happens, but there is, hole number ten comes down and wraps around the back of the driving range?
Yep.
And he is correct, it is essentially line of flight is perpendicular to the road now. You, you come in from the south and you shoot north to that green, which is along that.
So, it's right at the east end of the driving range then?
Correct, it's just below it on the east side. So, what do we do in the future to eliminate balls coming out onto the road? Do we put a high fence up there or?
Well, if you, if you look in B C, you have extremely high, high fence around the driving ranges and around, that wraps the road.
Henderson Lake, Henderson Lake Golf Course has, has a main road all the way around.
That's right, it has done.
And the Henderson Lake Boulevard is, the houses along there are constantly getting golf balls off their front lawns and ricocheting off their houses. So, you know...
Okay, so I heard one desire from a councillor to see what other golf courses are doing regarding liability. So, maybe we need to understand that a little bit better?
This one is interesting because it is only four hundred and eighty. So, yeah, I mean, it, it looks, it looks easy to us to say, you know, "I just follow your four eighty and go." It's also easy for him to just say, "Pay the four eighty, it's no big deal." But I, I wonder if this doesn't have the same legal ramifications and liability as if a death had occurred, right? Like if an accident and then there was a death, um, would we be liable in a death? And if so, we're liable in this four hundred and eighty. Um, if not, you know, like I, I just, maybe we need to look at that, maybe we do need a high fence, we need to certainly prevent, um, physical harm. In this case, it was, we're lucky it was a fender, not a, you know, not somebody getting hit by...
A jogger.
Right!
No, but I mean, you never know, right?
So, I, I, in, in addition to that, uh, you know, maybe pursue that and, and find out. I mean, if this was way more serious and, and we were talking something like a hundred thousand dollars or something, um...
What would happen?
You know, would we be, because that, that changes it, but in principle, it's the same, right? If, if we would owe a hundred thousand, we'd probably owe this four eighty. And, uh, so I'd be curious to know the answers to that.
Okay, I think those are all very good points. Maybe administration can be then, uh, directed to look into the legality and into what other golf courses are doing regarding...
And one last question, just to point up on that. You know, right now, if someone at the golf course were to break their leg just playing golf, are, are we liable for that? Or is that covered under the insurance of their golfing? So, that would be their policy if the, if we were to... So that would be their policy if Oregon is at all.
You can be assured we'd be third-partyed into the action, for sure. We own the land, and actually, we still insure the land, and we still have some insurance obligations and risk obligations there. So, yeah, you can be sure we're third-partyed into that, no question.
So how do we handle the town square where we have ball fences on three corners of the town, turn them back into playgrounds? I mean, we've got windshield being put out, and that's public land, and yet, do we pay for windshields and stuff like that?
Knock on wood, we haven't.
Up to now, we have a house.
Yeah, this is the question, as I read this, the town has not accepted liability, but that doesn't mean we are, what's the proper word?
We are not liable.
That we're not liable, because we might be.
No, that's right.
And just because we don't accept liability doesn't mean that we are liable. That's why I like councillor Creed's idea, let's check and see what other golf courses are doing.
Are legal.
Or any?
Let's check with legal.
All right. Can we maybe put a proper?
Five hundred dollar call, more than 480 to pay this.
Jeff, do you want a proper motion to that effect? Or is that just a recommendation?
Sure, so I know kind of what we're bringing back, that would be good.
Okay. Councillor Creed, would you like to do that?
Yes, I will make a motion that Jeff and administration look into other golf courses, request what liabilities that they accept for vehicles or homes that are adjacent to golf course properties.
If there's damage occurring.
Yeah, and if, I guess, if failing, you know, failing that, if we don't resolve it through that, then we do check with legal as well. But first go to other golf course liabilities.
So would that work?
Yeah, I just, I would add to that, you know.
So you want to do a friendly amendment?
Well, yeah, I'm just suggesting as part of that discussion, maybe it doesn't involve a 500 dollar call illegal on a 400 dollar issue. But then again, if we need to be looking at a fence there, I know with liability usually comes gross negligence, not just negligence, but gross negligence, and I doubt there is any down there. Even though we are pointed a little bit funny, there's probably still enough of a buffer that we're covering. But, you know, I don't know, I mean, obviously, if there's gross negligence, we pay it, no question. If there isn't, I mean, this is certainly a scary precedent, because that will make every Atkins window from now on.
It's not only that, it's every pothole in town, it's every other thing of that same nature, so be careful what you wish.
Absolutely. The test is, would the party's acting reasonably, you know, been able to do something about it? I think we're probably reasonable in our actions, but I totally get where Mr. Gibbons is coming from, his wife was just driving downtown.
Exactly.
Now he's got a 500 dollar bill in his hands. The difference with homes is, is that you know that going in. You know you're building or buying a house on the golf course, that's part of the deal.
So you're accepting some of the liability.
Yeah, you've accepted some of that. I actually talked to a guy that owns a house on the golf course, and he said, if I was, if I wasn't going to accept the responsibility of paying for damages from golf balls, I wouldn't have bought a house on the golf course.
Right, exactly.
You know, so there is a bit of a consent piece here too, right?
Yeah.
That doesn't exist in this case.
Okay.
Or, you know, I mean, you're driving past the golf course, there is a risk, but, I mean, you were gonna stop people from driving past the golf course, because there's a risk.
Put a sign out there.
What is the risk? It can hit by a meteorite too, but, you know, it's not.
Okay, well, so I think there is a motion to then look at what other golf courses are doing before we make a decision on this item. So, all in favor? Thank you. All right, so I think we should recess at a good time.
Mayor, we have just some snacks, it's not a meal, but it is plateful.
Can I suggest one thing that every council meeting, we're asking for a recess time? Can we put that right into the agenda, that we have a definite, so we don't have to request a break?
And then I don't have to get hassled every time.
We used to actually do separate breaks in our agendas, I think.
Yeah, a standing seven o'clock break.
Six thirty.
Six thirty.
Six thirty, is that all right?
If that's what you want, I'm not going to tell you no.
Well, I would suggest that we have a break time right into the CCW.
Okay, so you want to work an hour and a half and have a break? No matter what it is? Okay, well, that's okay, we can do it.
If we're in the middle of something, obviously, we'll, you know, we'll wait.
Okay, it's fine, so we can have administration do that, I don't think we can.
Move to recess?
Move to recess, all in favor? Thank you, ten minutes, okay.
Say twenty minutes.